All opposed, same sign.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. So, looking at tonight's agenda. Before we approve it, I'm wondering if we can move up the open meeting laws review. Since Tyler Larson is here with the state's attorney. Anyone, nobody's an injection, I'll make a motion that we move that up to the top and go through that first.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. So, real quick, with that being said, let's do our conflict of interest decorations. Let's prove the agenda.
What's that?
He says we have to approve the agenda.
I thought we just did.
I thought we did.
You made a move, a motion.
Okay, so the agenda's been amended with Tyler up at the top. Can we make a motion to approve the agenda?
Sure.
Okay, same, all, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Hearing none, okay, agenda's approved. Now we'll do conflict of interest.
Kettering, none.
Welsh, none.
Hummel, none.
O'Hara, none.
Huber, none.
Clark, none.
Seeing that, we're good to go, we'll start with Tyler Larson for our open meetings.
Good evening, I am here tonight to comply with the new South Dakota statute that came into effect this last legislative session. Which requires each governing body, subject to open meetings laws, to review on an open meeting record. The open meetings law is provided by the South Dakota Attorney General's Office. So, in your packet, I provided you a brochure, prepared by the Attorney General's Office. Entitled conducting the public's business in public. I'll briefly just go through some main talking points to refresh the laws that are applicable to planning and zoning. So, open meetings laws, you know, are, the purpose of those is for transparency, we want to have a transparent form of government. No matter which level of state government we're talking about, that being county or state level, school district, city, etc. Open meetings apply to any meeting of any state or political subdivision. They can be in person, statute now also allows members to appear via telephone or Zoom. Publication for any meeting. For the agenda needs to be posted at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. No items can be added to that agenda within those 24 hours, however, like we did tonight. The commission can rearrange the order before they approve unless that item was advertised for a specific spot that will be voted on. Public comment is required at all public meetings. The commission can set time limits on which items to be discussed, but they have to allow public comment. You guys don't deal so much with executive sessions, so I'll skip over that. I want to briefly talk about quorum, you know, when you guys meet and there's a quorum, you gotta advertise. So, if you guys are gonna be at a place where you know three or more of you, or whatever your quorum is, are gonna be together, you gotta advertise that, that that's a possibility. So, did everybody have a chance to review the brochure that was provided in your packet? Okay. Also, you know, it's not really an open meetings issue, but when you do go to these other events hosted by communities for a Q and A session. Make sure there's no quorum present, two or two of you can go engage in conversation, no policy will be made at those meetings. That you're invited to speak at or provide information at. And as I stated now, the new law requires these commissioners to put on the record once a year, so this is your one for this year. And then in January, I'm gonna ask Gary to put this on the agenda again, and we'll go through it annually after the first meeting of every year. Just to make sure we get it out of the way for, in compliance with the statutes. One thing that I do want to make sure you guys are aware of, any time you guys are together or receive information, emails, text messages. It's, it can be an official meeting, if you guys all receive an email and respond to each other, that can count as an open meeting violation. So, make sure if you receive an email that's sent to all of you, do not respond. Text messages, don't respond if there's more than three of you in that text message chain, that'd be considered under South Dakota law, an open meeting. So, that has to be on top of your guys' radar when you're having those, you know, conversations, or you get those emails where all of you are on that email. So, make sure you don't respond to those because there could be a potential open meetings violation. So, with that, I think just to comply with statute. You would need a motion to acknowledge that you have reviewed the open meetings laws provided by the Attorney General. And then it would be a roll call vote for each, each one.
Before we do that, could you, could you get that brochure and provide it to the commissioners and planning zoning board?
Yeah, so that, that brochure was put in the packet for tonight. And then I did hand, or email it.
I'd like the brochure.
Yeah, I gave you the copy right now. But it's also in the packet or provided to the county commissioners as well.
Roll call. Bill needs to get up to the speaker first. Do you want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Flat of Angie Highland addition in the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter of section 33, township 94 north, range 54 west of the 5th PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Basically what she's doing. This is the tire piece here, you can see she's kind of jogging down around the road. So, it's basically this piece. And it is a farmstead.
Yeah. Do we want to open for public comment first? Do you have any public comment on the Highland plot? Seeing none? And closed? Funding commission discussion?
I don't see a problem.
You have a motion with you're not seeing a problem?
Sure, I'll, so move.
Second will be O'Hara? All right. Roll call vote. Huber?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Hummel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Welsh?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
On to the drots, drotsman ETJ.
This is a, an ETJ plot, so it's more of a procedural thing than anything, you don't control that area, so. Two hundred. For reference, this is what Fox Stop gas station is, state DOT, county. This entire lot, he's creating a separate lot in this parcel right here. And it's already been approved by the city.
Can open public comment regarding the drotsman plot? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Funding commission discussion?
So move, Huber?
Second.
And we'll do a roll call vote? Huber?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Hummel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Welsh?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Last one. Armelink. Flat of Benson's addition in the south half of the northeast quarter of section 13, township 94 north. Road 56 west of the 5th PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
So, this is the entire parcel. There is access off of 81 right here to that lot. They are surveying off. Fifty-seven acres, basically the trees and the east. It's zoned ag, so they, they meet the minimum required lot.
Yeah. We'll open up to, what?
Straightforward.
Yeah, open up for public comment? Seeing none, commissioner discussion? I mean, it aligns with the, it aligns with the goals of the county commission, right? Trying to get some homes and some valuation out there and smart areas that we can match, you know, zoning. Our zoning ordinances, it's right behind a group of those five homes or whatever it is, right along 81 right there. So. I don't have anything else to say, but I do know it aligns with our, our vision, or kind of what we're working towards with some of our zoning ordinances.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
When you're ready, Bill, we'll take a roll call. Huber?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Hummel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Welsh?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
And so now that we're done with the plots, we're gonna move on to the discussion for solar energy conversion system setbacks from lakes, rivers, and streams. Does everyone have a chance to review what was sent out, provided? Okay, Gary, you wanna come up?
So, we had a request to relook at the setbacks for the lakes, rivers, and streams. As, as was mentioned, there's a number of counties around us that have 100 foot versus the 660 foot. If you recall, when we redid the solar. Solar ordinance that we already have in the design requirements that it has to meet the NPDES. Soil erosion and sediment control requirements. And we also have that there's a required fence that fully encloses the, the solar panels. So, I guess we're just here to talk about if, if you want to consider changing it to 100 foot. Or if, if there's some specific reasons that we do not want to move that and take public comment on that.
Yeah, we can open up for public comment. Please state your name.
My name is Diane Hobden, and a couple of years ago, the solar farm task force was created. To create a draft of the zoning ordinance for Yankton County, and at that time that the zoning, or that the task force was created, I attended each one of those meetings. And first of all, I just want to say that I kind of don't understand why the solar farm setbacks are being reviewed at this time. When the current ordinance is less than two years old and has yet to be tested. There isn't a project in existence that I know of right now. And determine how well these setbacks work, or how detrimental they might be to the citizens of this county. Secondly, at the time the solar farm task force was drafting the ordinance and researching the facts of. It was said that this area is considered too far north to actually render a solar farm financially feasible. At one of the meetings, information was shared indicating there's a line somewhere in Kansas. Where anything south of that line would be feasible for solar farm development. South Dakota is certainly not south of that line. Lastly, it's no secret that the general public is not in favor of having these types of farms built next to their home. The crowds that showed up during the drafting of the wind farm ordinance in Yankton County. And the blocking of any further wind farm development in Knox County, Nebraska. Should stand as prime examples of what the public sentiment is for these types of developments. In conclusion, I ask that the current solar farm setbacks remain in place. They were already reduced by the county commission from what the solar farm task force had recommended. And they haven't been tested to see if they're beneficial or detrimental to the county. The solar farm task force spent a lot of time and energy in researching the facts and drafting that ordinance. Let's give it a chance before beginning to amend it, thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Next.
Good evening, great to be back here, State Senator Lauren Nelson. But tonight, I really come to you as former member of this board. And also a member of the solar task force that was organized a couple of years ago. And also a citizen of Yankton County. Last week, I found it interesting looking at the agenda, and yes, I do look at the agenda each week to see what you guys are up to. I found it interesting, it on it that it said, quote, 7:10 PM discussion. Solar energy conversion system setbacks for lakes, rivers, and streams. I immediately thought, it must mean someone or some entity doesn't want to play by the rules. Established by this board and our current commission just 20 months ago. Here's why I think even considering this is wrong. The package shows many examples of other counties setbacks from waterways. It looks like 100 feet from, quote, the high watermark. Is the desired measurement from the current 660 feet. Keep in mind a couple of things. This 660 was a compromise. As a task force, through our research, we encountered setbacks for waterways as high as a mile and as low as 50 feet. We felt a middle mark would be right for Yankton County with its rivers, numerous lakes, and many streams. Each county is different. And what might be right for 100 feet for the counties in your packet is probably not right for Yankton County. When writing ordinances, many counties just, quote, cut and paste, unquote, from other counties, which is wrong to the county's people because each county is so different. This afternoon, I did a quick Google search to see if setbacks have changed since we had that solar task force. Once again, as happened two years ago with this research today, the setback ranges are very, is a variety, I think, are greatly different. Number two, water in lakes and streams and rivers doesn't just stay on one landowner's property. It can move many miles and water in a lake laps up on shores that can may also, that can also be many miles long. And again, rivers and streams are many miles long as well. This setback protects adjacent landowners and landowners downstream, downriver and downshore from the activity associated with constructing a solar complex and the components fixed in the soil for decades. The construction of solar complexes has resulted in lawsuits and severe damage to adjacent landowners. Studies are limited at this point, but those that have been done show, quote, detectable enrichment in soils closer to panels, unquote, of harmful elements. If it's in the soil, it's heading into nearby streams, rivers and lakes if the setbacks are too close. And these are intact panels. What happens if panels are broken by hail or mismanufacturing? More studies are underway, like an extensive multi-year look by Virginia Tech at soils under and near panels. Let's not jump too quickly and reduce our setbacks before finding definitive scientific proof that panels do harm or do not harm our soil, our waterways and ultimately us. Number three, these examples from other counties in your packet use the terminology, quote, high watermark, unquote. I think it should read, quote, ordinary high water mark, unquote. This term means the point on the bank or shore or waterway up to which the presence and action of water is so continuous as to leave a distinct mark either by erosion, destruction or terrestrial vegetation or other easily recognized characteristics, unquote. For a lake, that seems pretty straightforward. But I'm sure you would all agree that it might be a bit harder to determine for a stream or a river. Think of the flooding in this county in the last few years. River channels have changed and streams have carved out more land. What happens when a flooding event occurs and the river stream is no longer 100 feet away from the panels, but less? Maybe down to much less. With 660 feet, at least the panels are still a considerable distance from the running water. In closing, 660 feet was a compromise. It protects adjacent and downstream landowners and ensures adequate distance if erosion or channel change occurs. This discussion instigated by someone or some entity is simply a camel trying to get its nose underneath the tent. If this is changed, what is next? Will the whole camel be under the, under the tent in due time? Our current commission approved this ordinance 20 months ago. And with their approval, they agreed that 660 feet is reasonable and appropriate for Yankton County and its citizens. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other, oh, got one comment.
Hi, Christie Conway. We live in northern Yankton County. I'm just asking you guys to leave it as it is. It was studied, it was thought out, it was thoroughly discussed, it was decided that that was the best thing. It hasn't been that long. There's lots of other issues to address that haven't been addressed recently, so I'm just asking you to leave it alone, please.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Planning Commission, we can discuss.
Why is this being brought up?
Second.
Why is this being brought up? Just, I mean, Lauren makes a good point. 20 months ago and now we're wanting to change it, you know? Why?
I think we have to be careful of their words, right? I don't think anybody's wanted to change it. We have somebody who is interested in us reviewing it. So again, I just think we don't want to say the word we because it maybe paints a picture of somebody's telling us to change ordinances. They want us to review. Specifically, everyone brought up the same point that I think you're bringing up is it's been less than two years. It was reviewed, same as what we saw with like wind energy, technology hasn't changed a ton in that time period. So why would our ordinance change, right? Studies have not provided more data, so why would we change? I guess is what you're getting at, and I agree with that.
I'm just, what is driving it? What is driving from 660 to 100?
There's an interest in housing.
What, what's the backstory? I, I would like to know that.
I don't think it's our due diligence to know. There's obviously somebody who is interested in doing a, what are we abbreviated to, SCS or whatever we abbreviated to, right? But there's somebody who's interested in developing, purchasing, planning, whatever, very early stages. And they just want to know if what Yankton did 20 months ago still stands or not because it just changes project viability, right?
Who governs the waterways in the county? Is it the county? Is it the state? Is it the feds? Who has jurisdiction over the waterways?
You can put a water.
Like James Rivers, multiple states, Missouri's, I think federal, but I mean, I don't even know if we have jurisdiction over that stuff. Or those waterways.
It's identified in the state permitting process, correct, Gary? So at, at the state level, they have identified that they at least have enough say to say that waterways, you know, this is what they recommend or they can permit projects along the waterways because of course we had to go to the state every time we try to do something along the Jim River that could be dicey, but we do, you know, just like with the hog confinement, it has to go through a state permitting process.
I, I without the information presented to me as to why, why change it then? So that's my position.
Sure, and I, I think we all understand, we all understand this.
There's nothing, nothing to discuss.
Yeah, like, like you said, it was basically just a request to review that again. And as far as who governs the waterways, you know, like, like you said, you know, we have various boards that James River Water Development District that, that does some work for James River. We have School of Public Lands, the state that govern a lot of waters. It does depend on what it all is. But I think the concern here is more, what are we doing and how are we doing it? Waters of the US especially of how we're stopping or preventing things from running, from running into it. And that, that's why we need to be concerned and like, you know, that was, like it was stated, basically we haven't had this ordinance in place that long. And there's no problem with someone asking why we might have went this direction. I think that was answered just a little bit ago. And I'm sure they'll take that to heart and, and at least they, they wanted to hear and hear the meeting and see what some of the reasoning behind it was.
Yeah, I mean, I, I kind of also fall back to the two task force, task forces that did all that work and, and investigation and they're so knowledgeable and put together, you know, fantastic reports. And I would, I would rely on those reports to guide us. I, because, you know, we don't know, they did all the work. That's my, kind of my thoughts.
And if that's the feeling of the board, that will, that's, that will probably be the end of this discussion at this time unless it's brought up again down in the future.
I guess I'd like to bring up another issue and that is what is the purpose of even having a zoning ordinance? If we have a zoning ordinance, then the citizens of Yankton County can make well-informed decisions on their investments, on building homes, on picking an area to reside in, whether it's ag or lakeside commercial or it's commercial or it's any of our zoning areas. And we've established in certain districts, R1 and R2 and R3 and ag, what lot sizes should be. We've established setbacks, we've established yards. We recently had a couple in here who wanted to build a garage closer to a road than the ordinance allowed. And you know, at one time, this was the Wild West, but it's not now. Now we have ordinances. People make decisions based on those ordinances. And when an ordinance is put in place in December of 2023, and as Dan points out, the county commission, the elected representatives of the, of the people put in place a task force in the late winter and early spring of 2023. This planning commission received their work product. And the planning commission heard the work product and then I believe we had two public meetings before we voted on and approved at the county commission. So that's three months, three more months. Then the county commission received that work product. They heard the product, they had two public meetings before the law went into effect in December of 2023. In other words, it took a whole year to do this. And I can tell you, because I was on that task force, Don was too. And so was Sherry, she's not here tonight. Uh, we reviewed not only every county in South Dakota setbacks, but surrounding states as well. And as Lauren pointed out, Lauren was on the work task force too. They vary from virtually nothing to impossible. And we, and by the way, when the county commission reviewed the work product of the task force and the planning commission, they changed some of the setbacks and reduced them. Then they voted to approve it. And so to come back to my original point, the citizens of Yankton County deserve stability unless there's an overwhelming reason to make a change in our zoning ordinance. I can support what he said besides, but we do need to understand that ordinances are fluid as things change as information comes in. Again, particularly for this one, I think you guys all know my vote. I don't want to go down this rabbit hole. It was gone down 20 months ago for a year plus. Got a lot to do during that next year. I don't need to spend my energy on this. But as citizens and as people of the community, we do have the right to question, you know, the ordinance. That's what replats are. That's what this whole process is, is people said, well, it should be straightforward. If I had 20 acres, I could, on ag land, I could make it into residential, right? But I only have 16 acres, right? So the whole process is that people, entities or not, who cares? People can question the ordinances, ask why, they can bring new and compelling evidence and reasons. And what we don't want to communicate is that Yankton is inflexible. We're not willing to review ordinances and practical planning for our future. So again, particularly on this case, y'all know my opinion, but I do never want to communicate out that if you bring it up, we're going to basically ostracize you for challenging an ordinance from two years ago, two months ago, whatever. That's what this whole process is. So just make sure we are aware of that when we communicate out.
Can I make another point here? And it sort of builds on what you're saying. The very first time I came to a county commission meeting, Don Kettering made a very strong point about strategic planning. And he'd been making that point for a long time. And as a result of that, we had two task forces. One of them was on solar, one of them was on wind. As far as I can tell, that is the only strategic planning we've done. May I suggest that rather than every time someone offers to build a project in Yankton County, we are reacting to their request. Maybe it'd be a good idea if this commission, the county commission, would impanel a new task force. And that task force would be charged with determining what kind of industries do we want in Yankton County? What do we want? Where do we see ourselves going? Right now, it appears to me that we're blowing in the wind. Whatever comes our way, you know, and I don't want to be silly, but you know, we don't want to be in a situation where everybody, every time somebody comes by and offers us a little bit of candy, we, we just jump in the truck and go with them. Because that's what this is about. It's about tax revenue. And we should be thinking, what sorts of industries do we want in Yankton County? What are our strengths? What are our weaknesses? What are our opportunities? What are the threats that are out there? And we should do it with a 20-year horizon. I mean, how many of us know that we are sitting within if somebody had a really good arm, a stone's throw of a national park? Did you know that? Well, we are. The Marine, the Missouri National Recreational River is a national park, just the same as Yosemite Glacier and others. The fact that some of us don't know that tells me that we're not marketing ourselves. And I would like it very much, you know, first of all, I agree that I'm not interested in going down this rabbit hole of changing setbacks that have been in place for less than two years, but I am in favor of putting together a group of people who would sit down and decide who do we want to be? My goodness, with the recreational opportunities, the trails. You know, Sam, first time I ever talked to you, you were talking about bicycle trails all over the county. And we should have them. We should be a Mecca for people that like to bike, that do outdoors things, that kayak and canoe and fish and hunt. But we're not marketing ourselves that way. Not to mention the fact that we have a historic downtown where they tried Jack McCall for shooting Wild Bill Hickok. There are people who would be interested in that history. So let me, let me just suggest that rather than closing this off by having a sort of a negative taste in our mouth, that we close this off by not being the county of no, as Nancy Winandee brought up one time somewhat unfairly, but there's an element of truth to it, that we become the out, the county of yes. Because this is what we want, not because it's what somebody else decides they want and decide that they're going to try to impose on us. So that's.
So is there a motion in there?
No, there was no motion, but I'll make one. I'll make the motion.
Well, there's no action tonight, so I just wanted to make sure you weren't trying to.
No, no, I'm not doing that. I'm just suggesting something on the record. We ought to do.
Do we have any points that are directly related to? Do we have any points that are directly related to are we or are we not interested in revisiting? Solar conversion systems setbacks to rivers, lakes, streams, other body of water?
I'm not. I just look at that map behind Don and I see problems.
Lot of blue on the map behind Don. Okay, I see that. Dan?
I think without a reason. Okay, there's no discussion.
Tim?
I agree.
Don?
Agree.
Mike?
I agree.
Okay, that being said, let's close the discussion. Okay, we can open up public comment one last time. Seeing none? Oh, Phil has something.
You go ahead and close public comment.
Okay, public comment is now closed.
I just wanted to remind everybody the last ordinance change that we made in July, Texas effect Thursday. So look for chickens.
Okay, chickens are going to be roaming. Good. Love chickens. Okay, that being said, discussion is closed. We will need a motion to adjourn.
Who did your?
Second, Welsh.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.
Um. Both both positive and negatives. You know, money, money talk.